Aaron Mu, Natasha Lancaster, Akeem Williams, Xandra Carson, David Dooling, Charlene Fields, Charlotte Harden, Wes Pratt, Lori Phan and myself. Want to funnel the voices of the many to the university and share information from the university back to Black alumni. Today, we're honored to have President Smart and several members of the university leadership team here to share the state of diversity and inclusion at Missouri State, what actions the university has taken and is planning to enhance the value of inclusion on and off campus, how the current economic crisis will impact the university, how Black alumni can help ensure the success of today's Black and underrepresented students, faculty and staff. Over the next 60 minutes, I believe you will be challenged, encouraged and inspired about the direction of our alma mater, Missouri State University. Before I hand over to Natasha Lancaster, our public relations coordinator, if you have questions during the presentation, please share them using the chat feature. This will allow us to capture those and then share those with Aaron Mu, who will then be able to share those questions with our panelists. Once again, on behalf of the Black Alumni Council, welcome. It is wonderful to see you here. Natasha.
Hi, welcome everybody. I'm Natasha Lancaster. As George said, I joined the Black Alumni Council in 2019 as the Public Relations Coordinator. I wanted to share a little bit with you, and I'll keep it brief, about the purpose of the Black Alumni Council. So you may not understand or may not, but the Missouri State Black Alumni Council is a part of the Missouri State Alumni Association. So we work in tandem with them. It is an affinity group, if you will, of the Alumni Association. So we're one body, one organization. However, the Black Alumni Council and our purpose is really to try and help the university and the Alumni Association promote diversity and inclusion and to just build a stronger relationship between alumni, staff and students and really to support the universities and the Alumni Association's efforts with making sure that voices of Black and Brown students are heard and really considered and making sure that everyone feels welcome and is very able to fully participate with the university as alumni and of course as students as well. And so we really want to be a team and want to be united and want to be able to support the university's efforts and also make sure that we're supporting students and alumni and make sure that everybody's kind of on the same page and working towards that broader goal. And we want to help mentor students that are ready to graduate and getting ready to become alumni and really want to provide that support in the community and in communities across the country where alumni are going out to so that you know that you've got someone that you can reach out to that can provide that support as you go out into your careers. So that being said, I'll turn it back over to Aaron. Thank you so much.
Thank you Natasha. So I'm Aaron Muks. I am a founding member of the Black Alumni Council and I'm also a board member, actually Vice President of the Alumni Association Board. So we are welcoming you today. You're going to get a lot of welcomes because we're very excited to get to this point. I'm tasked today with introducing someone who needs no introduction. Our president, President Cliff Smart, who we've been working with over the course of, well, I personally have been working with over the past few years. However, we have been meeting more often as a Black Alumni Council to bring light, shed some light on what's going on in the world and what's going on in our campus. So from here, President Smart, you can take it away.
Thank you, Aaron and George and Natasha. And again, thanks for everybody for joining us today. I've got with me Wes Pratt. Wes is one of the two assistants to the president and is also our Chief Diversity Officer. He spearheads kind of everything connected to community engagement in Springfield and beyond. Is on with us today. Cal Moats, our Athletic Director, is on today because he and his team have put together a specific plan, an inclusivity plan for our athletes going forward. Dr. Michelle Smith is with us. She's been with the university several years, but she's our brand new Dean of Students. And so anything connected to students, she's on to talk to you about. And then Chris Craig is the Deputy Provost, so the number two guy on the academic side. He's also on the call today to address curricular and faculty issues, plans or concerns. And so I thought I would begin with kind of a few opening remarks and then we've been working on our action plan for next year, I guess actually the year beginning July 1. So we're 13 days into a new year for us. And as Aaron said, we've been working, our team has been working with the Black Alumni Council. I think this is our fourth meeting. The first three have been with leadership and this is our fourth meeting as we expand that reach to get additional input into strategies for the fall. And that interaction began shortly after the death of Mr. Floyd and a series of events connected to that. So after that event, which was the culmination of multiple events where police conduct resulted in the death of mostly African-American men over the last several months, the university released two statements. And then since then, we've been focused on the opportunity this presents to make real progress in terms of both the diversity of and the climate on our campus. And so that has become our focus and the timing is such that we're preparing our action plan for FY21 right now. And we will present that to the Board of Governors at our August 6th and 7th Board Retreat. And so one of the things as I interacted with the leadership of the Black Alumni Council, there was a both an interest in wanting to know what the university was doing, but more so than just knowing, wanting to have input into what the university was doing, particularly in this area. And so we've had several interactions where we've shared thoughts and gotten input. And I hope they will see that many of the things they've talked about are included in this draft of the action plan for next year. So we have four focus areas. One of them is crisis management because we're still in a pandemic and expect to be in a pandemic through the next 12 months. One of them is planning because this is the last year of our five-year plan. And so we'll begin planning on a new long-range plan, a new strategic enrollment managing management plan, a new visioning guide for the university. And then a third focus topic is academic and career initiatives. It is, after all, the main mission of what we do. And then our fourth focus area will be on diversity, equity and inclusion. And so we've been working, Ryan DeBooth, my Chief of Staff, and Wes Pratt, along with the Provost area and the Dean of Students area have been working on an action plan for next year. So we want to show you where we are. It's not final and so we want your input and thoughts. You know, what's missing? What shouldn't be here? Any explanation of what is here? Word thoughts? And so let me just quickly go through this focus area on diversity, equity and inclusion. And then we'll turn it back to Aaron to manage questions. So here are the first two action items. Enhance intervention strategies for the university's bias response team to address racist incidents on campus or between members of the university community. One of the requests that we've had from many of our African-American alums and students is we need to be more aggressive on this. We need to be aggressively anti-racist. And so part of that involves reviewing policies and making them as aggressive as we can within the limits that we're under in terms of First Amendment obligations as a public entity. But that is going on. We've had a bias response team for at least five years. But can we, and we, you know, can we be more aggressive in terms of addressing any kinds of racism that occurs on campus, particularly student-to-student, residence hall, those kinds of events, social media interactions? Second, and this is something our students want and are funding 25% of, through fees, the university will fund the remaining 75%, design and develop a facility expansion of the Multicultural Resource Center. So right now, we have two areas of the MRC. One is in the Student Union. One is in the basement of one of the residence halls, Freddie. What this would do, and this would be a $1.6 million project, would be to relocate both together in one space in the Student Union and double it in size. And so we had lots of conversations with students about that in the spring. They voted to authorize $400,000 to be transferred to the university to help fund this. The university will fund the other $1.2 million. And I would tell you, in a period of scarcity, there are very few projects that will be funded on campus. But we are putting money where the emphasis is and we'll begin designing this project with student and staff input beginning in the fall. Next slide. So then this, the third action item deals with enhancing training and educational opportunities for faculty, staff, students and the community. You see a variety of things here. It includes, if we go down to the fifth bullet point, expanding particularly educational opportunities for incoming students. There are trainings planned for everyone living in the residence hall beginning in the fall for everyone in the introduction to college class or panels after every session of the Public Affairs Conference as well as elsewhere. We're also expanding our cultural competence training with faculty, staff and administrators. All of my team will go through Wes's Facing Racism Training sometime in the fall. And then we're actually going to begin, have an event that Lyle Foster, one of our sociology faculty members, an African-American leader in our community, will be doing a workshop for all faculty upon their return to campus addressing particular issues for faculty to think about as school starts. He'll also be doing a training session with our Board of Governors at their retreat. If we move to the next slide, the fourth bullet point is continuing to work on access retention and graduation rate of our underrepresented students. They graduate at a lower rate than students at the university as a whole. This has been a focus for at least the last five years through a variety of programs. But again, there are new initiatives on here, including the First Gen Forward and First Scholars Network. Those are new initiatives that will roll out this fall as we continue to try to make progress on narrowing the gap between our white students and students of color in terms of retention and graduation rates. Then our next slide. Kyle has put together for athletics a diversity education initiative that he's happy to explain to you if that's of interest. And then we really need to continue to grow and retain our underrepresented faculty and staff. When we started this long-range plan a little over four years ago, 10 and a half percent of our workforce were people of color. This fall, we have managed to move that number up 4.5% so that we're at 15%. The Board of Governors' goal is 16%. And so again, we'll be continuing to emphasize, we will have fewer hires this year because of revenue shortfalls, but this will become a priority on any hiring as we move forward. And then Chris Craig and Wes Pratt have worked together. We'll be rolling out a faculty mentoring program for our diverse faculty that will begin this fall. Let's go to the next slide. We continue to review and we're working through university policies to ensure that there have not been adverse impact to people of color. We got a report, I actually got a report today from our lawyer in looking at all of our disciplinary policies for the last year. There is no difference based on ethnicity between people going through the disciplinary process and that was good to know. But we continue to evaluate policies to see what needs to be changed. We have approved a test optional admissions pathway so that if you have a 3.25 grade point in high school, you will be admitted to Missouri State University regardless of your ACT score or whether you even take the ACT. We think that will help us recruit, particularly from inner-city schools, students of color. And we know that by history, the ACT test, students of color have not always scored at the same level. And so again, this opens the door wider for students to join the university who demonstrated in high school that work ethic and that academic ability to make grades. And then of course, we continue to work on internal and external partnerships. The Student African-American Brotherhood, which is a national organization with 250 chapters, has relocated to Springfield on the Missouri State University campus. We're excited about that. We think that's a high-visibility program that we will engage in more and more. Mr. Pratt was instrumental in bringing that to occur. We're also continuing to work on the other programs that you see listed there. And then finally, increased communication is something we heard loud and clear from the Black Alumni Council. We need to focus on and highlight good things that are happening in all college newsletters, in our website, in alumni publications. And so all of those kinds of things will plug in there as we work to do a better job in that area. And then of course, we always try to make sure that we're promoting a wide range of activities and events on campus that people of all backgrounds are interested in and want to participate in and that we can all learn from. And so let me stop there. I mean, there are tactics and strategies under each of those things. It doesn't at all summarize all the things that we have been working on in the nine-plus years that I've been president of the university. But I think it gives you a sense of where we are in terms of trying to move the ball forward for the rest of this year. And then diversity and inclusion and equity will be a major theme of planning long-term in the next long-range plan. It was one of our six themes in the last long-range plan. I think it will continue to be a, I know it will continue to be an important emphasis for the university as we move forward. So with that, I'm going to stop. I've got a hard stop at 1:15. I've got to be downtown for a community leadership meeting at 1:30. But that gives us 50 minutes that we can take your questions and input. Doesn't have to be a question you can respond to. Tell us what's on your mind, concerns that you have, things you want us to work on, things you'd want us to respond to. So let me stop there, Aaron, and I will turn it back over to you to manage the Q and A part.
Wonderful. Thank you for all the information. I know the school, the university is really working towards making some changes and that's amazing. So we have a couple of questions that have come in. And the first one, this came in when they were registering. So to attract more Black students, will there be any degree programs like the Human Relations one at the University of Oklahoma that was created?
So Dr. Craig, I'm going to kick that over to you. Talk about what we're working on on the curricular side.
I will, and there's lots to report on. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you all. First thing I wanted to say is that we have an opportunity to phase in some great curriculum and perspectives that we've wanted to do for a long time and we're getting that across the line. One of the things we're doing is we have a GEP 101 class and that's the class that everybody takes as freshmen. So we have developed a diversity focus within that class. There are 60 sections of that class. So when you think about all the students coming back, given what they have seen on TV and have talked about, to have a place and a context that was helped to be established by Lyle Foster and Wes Pratt and others will be a good first step. It's not the only step. And so I would like to go on to say that we're doing a number of other things. One of the things we're doing also is coming up with an attribute to designate other courses that have been in Gen Ed and other aspects of the program that have a diversity focus. And you know, when you think about diversity classes, that's kind of a broad term. But we're being very intentional about this. We're looking at classes that intentionally address social justice issues like what we're facing now. So we have a better handle about what those courses are and how those courses can be bundled that yes, could potentially lead to a Human Relations degree offering or minor. But we already have the plans for a diversity certificate that will take advantage of these new courses and these courses that have been enhanced. The other thing that we're doing is that, as you guys know, you know, one of our pillars of the Public Affairs mission is cultural consciousness. And so right now, there's been an option for people to go through the Gen Ed program without selecting the cultural consciousness pillar as their capstone. Well, we're going to go to the Senate Leadership and say, you know, everybody, everybody leaving Missouri State needs to come out with that capstone on cultural consciousness. I think that's going to be a great, I'm really excited about that one because not that a lot of students have been coming through, but that's a way to really shore up that loophole and feel very, very good about that. So you know, we have a lot of courses on campus that do focus on the right things, but we need to continue to work with our faculty and we are through a variety of approaches to strengthen the perspectives that I think would make this campus a welcoming place to be.
Chris, I think this last year, we approved a minor or certificate in diversity communications within the College of Arts and Letters. Is that not correct?
I think, I believe that's true. And again, Cliff, we already have on the book something in Diversity Studies as a minor that we think we can repurpose that, make it a broader credential as a certificate that would be applicable then to anybody at the university, regardless of what their major is going to be.
So just like you could get a certificate in leadership or certificate in writing or certificate in business principles, you could be majoring in any subject and get a certificate in Diversity Studies. Is that right?
That's correct. That's exactly what we're doing.
All right. Well, thank you for those answers. So I'm going to try to make one big question out of multiple questions that are pretty much the same. So we have a trend here. However, here we go. First of all, let's go to budget questions. So there's been a question about the position of, where'd it go? When the role of Assistant Vice President, Multicultural Programs, because it was Dr. Michelle Smith received the Dean of Students, that position was closed or on hold due to budgetary reasons? Do we foresee that one being reopened or filled? And then before we go there, there was a question about, this all goes with funding. So are any funds from the Onward Upward Campaign designated to the MRC expansion project? So I'm going to stop there because there's a lot of questions.
Yeah, let me take both of those. I'm probably the person to best address the budget questions on the panel. So we lost this year $12 million from state appropriations out of the $94 million that was allocated to us. And we have already been told that for next year, the year that we're about to begin, we're going to lose that additional $12 million for this year. And so the Board has passed a budget that assumes a $16.5 million reduction in revenue. Again, because of the pandemic, because of demographics in Missouri, we're expecting to have fewer students on campus that were taking classes this fall than last year. I think that will be true of almost every university in America. So we're having to figure out how do we operate with $16.5 million less money? On the athletic side, that doesn't include athletics, Kyle's trying to figure out how to operate on $1 to $2 million less of revenue, you know, as it becomes less and less likely that the usual kinds of athletic revenue are coming in. To help us then balance the budget, we put 68 full-time ongoing positions on hold for a year. 34 staff, 34 faculty, as you might imagine. No one was happy about that, no matter what unit you're in, if you have a frozen position. One of those positions was the Assistant Vice President for Multicultural Affairs. So Dr. Cisco and I, Dee Cisco is our Vice President of Student Affairs. She is Dr. Smith's immediate boss, who reports directly to me. We met last week and made two decisions. One was that we're going to move forward on the MRC expansion, which again, there are no other projects going forward that aren't paid for by private money. And so we've decided to go forward because that project was of such importance that we believed we should spend university money on it. And second, I agreed that we could unfreeze the Assistant VP of Multicultural Programs to make a hire with the goal that we would make a hire by the fall. Now, what she has to do now is find other positions that will be frozen to replace that because again, that's a part of how we're managing a budget. So for, and I have told all our employees this at our Town Hall last week, there's no extra money. There is no unallocated money anywhere. So if we fund something, it's because we are no longer funding something else. And so by next week, we should be moving forward to fill that Assistant VP position. But there are likely to be three other positions in Student Affairs because that's a fairly highly-paid position that will be frozen for a year because again, we're committed to doing that. In terms of can we fundraise for the MRC expansion? Absolutely, we can fundraise for it. And so Brent and his team, Development Directors, will be working to put together a list of folks or organizations or foundations that may have interest in funding, helping fund such a project. But the bottom line is whether we find that gift money or not, we're going to move forward on the MRC expansion.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that information. Okay, so this next question is really about, it's about staff, faculty, okay? And how to deal with on-campus racial profiling? And what is the pathway for that? So one of the questions had to do with Wes Pratt. And then so is one of his job responsibilities relates to internal relations with faculty and staff? And you know, what can be done with? And, you know, what can be done with issues that occur? I believe that a lot of things go into, as a staff member, as a faculty person on campus, if there's a situation that arises, they can't, they don't know how to get the situation resolved and how to retain their position. So one of the things is if they do experience racial profiling from either students or other teachers, I mean, what is their plan? How do they get that rectified? Because that's kind of how we lose some of the staffing, or how we cannot retain some of those. So if you can speak on that?
Yeah, and I'm going to call on both Wes and Chris and Michelle to all weigh in on this. And so Wes does not have a disciplinary job. And so Wes used to be in charge of the Office of Institutional Equity and Compliance. He has moved above that now to the highest level of administration and no longer oversees that. Somebody else does that. Dr. Smith oversees discipline of students. And so in terms of student-on-student kind of issues, she can address that. But Wes, why don't you talk about generally how you work with the Provost's Office and Deans in terms of these kinds of issues? I'll kick it over to Chris to fill in, and then Michelle, you can address the student side of that.
All right. Thank you, President Smart, and good afternoon. I think one of the challenges, well, we have several challenges that we face in Missouri State as well in the city of Springfield, but one has to do with the lack of cultural consciousness in reference to our, I would say, faculty sometimes, staff, directors, department heads. And so we've worked to hopefully create additional culturally conscious training, diversity, equity, and inclusion training, inclusive excellence training. So working with the faculty, just had a meeting last Thursday with the CNAS Dean, this College of Natural and Applied Sciences, and about 20 some odd faculty members who are very much interested in trying to improve the overall climate within the college, working to address those issues. We do have the Office of Institutional Equity and Compliance, again, which is on the compliance side of the House and the General Counsel's bailiwick or jurisdiction to investigate incidents of discrimination, harassment, things of that nature, Title IX regarding sexual harassment, sexual misconduct. So there are compliance functions within the institution. However, I'm one who believes that there has to be an emphasis on connecting our, certainly our Black, Latino, Asian, international faculty and staff to the campus as well as to the larger community. There has to be enhanced cultural consciousness, competency, development of faculty, staff, administrators. And so that's what we've been working to address. We have the Anti-Racism Institute, which is a Facing Racism Program that was actually established by the Chamber of Commerce here some years ago. Over the last, I guess since January 2016, we have been providing that program and instruction, a two-day intensive transformative sort of experience where folks get to understand what racism is, how it affects not only the institution but the larger community as well, and what needs to be done to mitigate it. And so how do we grow that sort of awareness, that knowledge, and then the skill sets to deal with that? So there's a number of different things that we sort of do out of this office in an effort to promote and understanding and in an effort to be anti-racist. I submit that it's just simply not enough for many of our faculty or administrators or staff to say, well, I'm not racist. You have to be anti-racist, particularly in this particular climate. The community meeting that President Smart mentioned a while ago that he's going to at 1:30, I'll also be attending that meeting. And there'll be a group of, a cross-section of folks from across the community who are looking at the issues associated with, how do we decrease or how do we increase the sort of the anti-racism thrust, not only within our organizations but in the larger community as well? So there are a number of different things that are going on, and I think, so we've been working at some of this stuff for a number of years, certainly since I've been in the position of being the Chief Diversity Officer. But it's also to create an environment that's not only on the campus, that's more welcoming, that's engaging, that's connecting, but also in a larger community. I'm sure some of you had challenges when you were attending Missouri State, not only on campus but in the general community. And I could say that, you know, and Charlotte Harden is a Springfield resident. I grew up in Springfield, and we're historically aware of the challenges that we have in this community. But we hope through emphasizing an anti-racism mode and an anti-racism way of functioning that we can hope to mitigate some of the adverse circumstances that some of our students, faculty, and staff have experienced over the years.
Chris, jump in.
Okay, so one of the things I wanted to say too is Cliff alluded to it in his intro about the mentoring program. You know, mentoring happens in a lot of informal ways. This is not going to be a forced program that we're implementing in fall, but it's going to have structure, and it has the support of the president here, because when you talk about funding and how things are supported in this particular economy and what we're facing, the president has put forth money that has allowed us to buy out, if you will, or to take some really quality people out of Arts and Letters, Judith Martinez, who's going to be leading the mentoring program, and Lyle Foster, who's going to be kicking off our Welcome Back presentation. And so that's going to be, that's going to be a good initiative that has real money behind it in terms of support there. We are in the process of recruiting mentors, and we all agree that the key ingredient of being a good mentor is someone with a great heart, someone who is kind, someone that will be there and help, not only help these guys move through the tenure process and what it means to be a faculty, but as Wes alluded to, also, you know, get wrapped around what's happening in the community to make the entire experience, the onboarding is as good as possible. We have other initiatives, some of them you may have heard about, you know, the Faculty Composition Diversity Initiative is another program that actually Wes and I co-constructed that, you know, we're growing our own folks with diverse backgrounds. We see the talent, we see the light in them and their potential impact, and so we'll bring them from instructor to a tenure-track faculty, or we'll do the same thing on the staff side to try to support folks. So a lot of things are happening. I did want to say though, that part of this is, I'm hearing, it's how to also deal with those conversations within classes and what are we doing to support faculty? I think we're going to be hearing from Lyle as part of this training that's going to go out to everybody, is a certain degree of honesty. You know, things have been difficult. We have an opportunity to make some changes. And so some of these things may be difficult to hear, but they need to be heard. And so I'm excited about the school year starting out with these new initiatives and hoping for the best. And we will be monitoring things. And the last thing I wanted to say is that, you know, our faculty handbook, you know, we talk about, you know, who's going to watch over things. We do have a faculty that have developed a governing policy that has a whole chapter that talks about what faculty responsibilities are. And we have added additional language recently approved by the board that really hits home the notion that we value all forms of human diversity in the classroom, and this is a central value of being a faculty. So we just need to work with our folks and give them the tools to do a better job.
Michelle, you want to weigh in in terms of, you know, trying to manage student issues?
Sure. Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to join you all today. We are certainly committed to creating a welcoming campus, but one that allows our students to have a sense of belonging. And we know that with a sense of belonging, our students are certainly going to be poised to be successful as they work through their programs. And that's going to also help them negotiate and navigate cross-cultural differences. And so we propose that we use an approach of developing a student diversity leadership program. And that program will be developed based on best practices and trends across the country. And we will use a train-to-trainer model for that particular program in which we're going to start with our student leaders on campus and take them through a series of workshops and trainings to do some self-reflection, to do some interactive simulations, to get a historical view, to also understand an anti-racist behavior and work, also to look at unconscious and implicit bias training as well. We are, if you will, giving some teeth to our Bias Response Team and how we work with students when incidents happen on campus, and those situations are coming through our Bias Response Team, which is made up of faculty, staff, and graduate students from across campus. We are connecting that directly to our Code of Conduct and our Student Code of Conduct in our office, which allows us then to not just, not just to allow our students to continue in that behavior, but also to give them a background and a history, but also to be educational in nature, not punitive, but also help with their learning and their understanding. And so in doing that, it allows our students to now have a better understanding of what that means. This particular program will include our student leaders initially, students that are coming from SGA, our fraternity and sorority life, IFC, PHA, NPHC, or our RAs on campus, our graduate students, our leaders of student orgs, and hopefully, I believe, our student athletes as well. And that will roll out in the fall. But it doesn't just include our student leaders, because we understand that it must be inclusive of all of our students on our campus in order for this to work appropriately. So I'll stop there, so that gives you an opportunity to ask other questions based on what I just said.
Right, because that actually, there were more questions in that area, actually. So, thank you. And you touched on it a bit. So I'm just going to read these two questions and then, because it's around that. So are there policies in place, so I just make sure I get this out for everybody, are there policies in place to address student organizational conduct, but there are no shades of gray in terms of racially tinged activities? So that's one, so you kind of really touched on that. And then, has the existing student safety policy been reviewed? And if so, is it significant in regards to today's climate? Or sufficient, I'm sorry, in regards to today's climate? So those are questions for you.
I would state that we are going through some revision of our Student Code of Conduct as we speak. One, because we have to include the new statutes and law in reference to Title IX. And so as we're doing that, we are also looking at other pieces of our Code of Conduct, and the student information is located out of this particular office. And so we're having conversations daily about how we make sure our students are, one, understanding the Student Code of Conduct and rights and responsibilities, and then how do we connect that, not only to their behavior but their way of thinking as well? So we do have some policies in place that specifically speak to our students, and we are looking at our Code of Conduct as we speak as well. We hope that the work we do is going to impact all of our students, not just incoming students, because we have seen a rise of some of the activities of our current students. And so, which is why our particular program does not just speak to incoming students, does not just speak to our student leaders, but all of our students across campus.
That's awesome. Okay, so I'm going to read this next statement, and this is President Smart. If you can tell us who this should go to. Okay. "The George Floyd murder and other acts of police brutality and institutionalized racism have been extremely traumatic for the people of color all over the country and the world. What has been done internally to provide a safe space for Black and Brown faculty, staff, and students to check in and talk about how they're feeling and how the community trauma has been affecting them? Is it possible to establish mental health support for students, faculty, and staff to specifically address these issues?"
Yeah, so let me make a couple of comments, and then Wes and Chris, you may want to jump in as well. We do have within, so our health insurance policy, or our self-insured health policy is with Mercy. And as a part of that, employees are able to access at no cost, I've forgotten the number, six or eight sessions for mental health, stress, a variety of issues through our health insurance provider. Now, having said that, I think actually that the reality is, it's more of a how do, you know, how do we as leaders, how do the deans, how do department heads, how does, you know, how does the Provost's Office and Wes's Office? How do we reach out and help reassure people that, to the extent that we can, that we're all in this together? So Wes, and then Chris, you might, you know, talk about what you know is going on there.
Okay, go ahead, Wes.
Well, I think the incidents of the past of this summer have been traumatic for a lot of folks. I know it's traumatic even for me, having to deal with the reality. And so we still institute our tough talks. They've been done on a weekly basis to give people an opportunity to share. Folks have reached out to our office. We've provided opportunities to our contacts for folks, for counseling, identified, particularly counselors of color, or mental health workers of color and resources for those who might have inquired about that. I think the challenge, I also am aware of Student Affairs, when things were jumping off, we actually, the students and Division of Student Affairs had folks reaching out to our students to engage them, not only regarding COVID, but how they're feeling about, and Michelle can sort of follow up on that, but how they're feeling about circumstances and issues that were going on nationally. I think basically, a major thrust to me has to be the fact that, you know, and I recall doing Ferguson, I recall doing the Mizzou Challenges five years ago. Many of our faculty, staff felt that they were ill-equipped to deal with the challenges that were faced, particularly by students from urban areas. And so to, again, to enhance their cultural consciousness and their capability and their awareness and their knowledge of how to, you know, be empathetic and sensitive to the trauma that is, has been a part of this past summer, is something that is critically important. And so looking to continue to develop that. We're working with Dr. Foster, we're working with our staff to hopefully put some of these things in place, but again, to build that cultural consciousness amongst all of our staff and our faculty to the extent that they are empathetic, that they are caring and even sympathetic to the challenges. Part of it has to do with, again, the whole emphasis on being anti-racist. You know, a lot of this, folks have to deal with their individual biases, and Michelle alluded to that, the individual biases, the implicit bias, and then do what they need to do to fix that. And do individually and collectively, start to address the issues that systemically have been a problem for centuries. And so that's a part of sort of this collaborative approach we're building across faculty, with the Provost's Office, across Student Affairs, across administration and staff in order to address these issues, but to address the systemic nature as well.
Chris?
Yeah, so two things that I think of. One is, is that, you know, we've been putting in place policies to support faculty relative to COVID-19. You know, recently, we extended, we gave the opportunity for everyone to have an additional year towards working towards milestones leading to tenure. And, you know, gosh, I'm glad we did that. I'm really delighted this question came up, because I do think we have folks that are facing a lot of challenges out there. So we have given everybody an additional year to work on things. But the thing that I think about the most here, we've already mentioned mentoring, but the people that are really on the front line are department heads. You know, we have different layers of people, and some are closer to the faculty and what's happening. And I think, in listening to you guys, that And I think, I think in listening to you guys, that, that, that the thing that I'm going to do, when we meet with the department heads, is, is to tell those folks, don't assume that your, that your faculty, diverse faculty are okay. Don't, don't assume that, even if they're not complete. We need to reach out to them. We need to be proactive and say, hey, how are you doing? What can I do to provide some additional resources or supports? They may not need anything at all, but they, we've got to get in that comfort zone where we're reaching out to people to make sure they're okay. So that's, that's going to be my messaging to, to, to the academic folks. That's, that is going to be my message.
Kyle, you, you might talk a little bit about how you have already done that and what you found. Obviously, you have a higher percentage of African-American employees in your department than I think any other.
Yeah, thanks, President Smart. Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things that we do, again, we identify and, and look to see who the best candidates are ahead of time. And I, I think anytime that we have that particular opening in what we have, we look to see those candidates that, that we think are, are best. And, and again, I look and see, you know, colleagues throughout the industry, and, and we're always watching and, and understanding who's the best out there. So I don't know if it's, if it's anything that's special, I think it's just intentional. And I think that's the most important thing, is, is we're intentional in terms of what we're trying to do. So anyway, I, I don't have anything special about it, I just.
Well, and you, you might talk, I mean, you end up having a department-wide meeting of almost, you know, 80 to 100 employees really focusing on this and kind of, you know, what came of that?
Yeah, we, again, I think we were, had the ability to, to get out there and, and as Cliff mentioned, almost all of our employees participated in our town hall meeting, if you will, with athletics. And, and we talked about a lot of issues. And I think, you know, our coaches, our assistant coaches, of which we have a lot of people of color, you know, it was really good. There's a great exchange of ideas, concerns, a lot of opening up of, of what people thought. And I thought it was really, really, really good, probably the most poignant and important discussion we've had as an athletic department. So I think anytime you can have those open discussions and people understand better about where you're coming from and what you feel, helps you moving forward in the direction that you need to do. And since then, we've had, we've had talks on three different subjects. We've got one next Tuesday, and we continue to have that dialogue where, where I think that's important. Again, we have, again, we have a direct relationship and direct contact all the time with, with students of color and athletics. And it's important for our student athletes to understand the culture. And, and we've got a long way to go, I'm telling you. We're, just because we're talking about it doesn't mean we've solved it. And, and I think it's been really good for us, and we're continuing to put programming together. Aja Jones is in charge of our area, and, and she is outstanding, has a tremendous amount of respect, both from the staff standpoint and the student standpoint. So we, we continue to work on areas with our students and with our faculty, or with our faculty, with our staff. And when our students come back, which will be, you know, in a couple of weeks, that, that will also help us formulate more programming ideas as well.
And, and many, many other departments are doing that. Brent Dunn on development, they've had similar conversations. And so, again, College of Natural and Applied Sciences is the example Wes gave earlier. So, so there are lots of conversations going on around campus of, of how do we reach out to and just make sure, to the extent that we can, that, that people are managing through this? And if they need, they need help in some way, then the goal is to try to provide it.
If I can speak to mental health for our students, just real briefly, remembering that when COVID-19 pushed us to do things virtually, our counseling center, which falls under this, my particular area, moved to working with our students virtually, be either through Zoom or through the phone. And so that continued. We do know that once students come back to campus, that this is what has happened in the country is going to impact some students more than others. And so we have already begun the conversation of moving to some group counseling sessions with our students, as well as continuing with the individual counseling sessions. All of our students have up to eight visits each semester. So virtually, that is a visit every two weeks. Also knowing that, that if students need more than that, then we will work through that process. SGA last year also put in place where students will now be charged an additional $8 fee. In doing that, one of the things that pushed that was that we were now going to look at hiring two additional counselors as we move through this process. And those two additional counselors would be with a focus of hiring diverse counselors who will work with our students here on campus. And so that was a huge move. We also know that when this particular virus invaded the country, we understood that some of our students needed some different types of outreach. And so even though I moved away from AVP for multicultural services, I still touch base with all of those individuals. And Dr. Cisco did an awesome job of making sure that our TRIO programs, our access programs, our Disability Resource Center, our Bears League, that they began reaching out to our underrepresented students with phone calls and emails to, to do, just as you stated, to touch base and to make sure that those students were okay. That hasn't stopped. We continue to reach out to those students. And many of that work is now being done across campus, from athletics to faculty reaching out. So we, we understand that the notion of not just our students belonging on campus, but to make sure that we are reaching them while they're away from campus physically, but that they still understand we are staying connected to them. Even though we like to say social distance, what I always say to my staff is that we are physically distancing so that we can stay socially connected. And so we will continue to do that in the work that we do.
Well, that was good. That was a lot of information, but questions are still coming in as that was going. So I'm going to touch on maybe two more questions, and then, just so we can respect everyone's time. So here is one. President Smart, there's no one on here from the Board of Governors, right?
There is not.
Okay. So there's a question that says, what are the conversations being had with the Board of Governors in today's climate relating to race and ensuring students feel, feel the equity, equality exists at Missouri State?
So at our last meeting in June, part of my, this was one of the major topics that we explored and had conversation on with the board. I gave a report, we had a conversation on the pandemic, the budget, and the racial issues in America and on our campus. So that was a board agenda in a public meeting. And I would, I would tell all of you that the board is very supportive of the action plan and initiatives that you have seen. They are interested in engaging in the, in participating in the Facing Racism training. They, they're, we are having a, a diversity activity that, that Dr. Foster will, will lead with them at the retreat. We have two members of the nine of our Board of Governors are people of color, including last year's chair, Gabe Gore, who's a very successful African-American lawyer in St. Louis. And so, so the board is cognizant of and aware of participating in the conversations. When I gave my end of the year report, this was one of the major topics I addressed. And when we go through the activity, or the action plan for next year, at the August 6 and 7 retreat, this will be one of the four focus areas that we talk about. So the board is engaged in this topic.
Wonderful. And then there's a, how is the diversity fellow position being utilized to us as students? Or is that no longer in place?
We do have diversity fellows. I think, Wes, I mean, isn't that what Judith and Lyle are?
Yeah, actually Judith is our diversity fellow. This year, she's working with the provost's office in our office and developing the faculty mentoring program. Lyle is our faculty diversity coordinator, so he's been responsible for the development of our cultural consciousness, training, our professional development for faculty. Judith is also instrumental in that. We were doing some things with the Faculty Center for Teaching and Learning, many diversity workshops and things of that nature. So those are, at least the diversity fellows that are sort of affiliated with our office and our function. But we try to collaborate with our, with the provost as well as Student Affairs. Again, Dr. Foster does the tough talks, he created that a few years ago. He and Dr. Leslie Anderson, who was the former interim chief diversity officer some years ago, do facilitate our Facing Racism training, which is probably true, provided professional development for about 250 community-based influence shapers, whether they're in business, corporate, faith-based organizations. And so that whole anti-racism thrust is one that we try to facilitate through our work with our diversity fellows, as well as our facilitators for the Facing Racism Institute.
Okay, that's awesome. So the last question I have is, will there be tough talks for people of color that are safe place to share how they are affected? So it kind of goes back along to the mental health and just checking in, but will there be a tough talks for, for people, people of color for that?
Yeah, yes, it will. I think they had one of those, and they'll continue to have them in a brave space. So yes, Dr. Foster will be facilitating those.
Wonderful. So that concludes the questions that we'll go over today.
All right, thank you, Erin.
My pleasure. George?
Yes. Erin, thank you so much for jumping in and taking control of the questions. I experienced some technical difficulties today and wasn't able to do so, so I really want to thank you. I also want to thank all of our panelists for their participation today, the information that they shared. And it was, it was almost to the point where it was too much at one time. But I'm very, very happy that we had this opportunity, speaking with President Smart at different times. He's made a commitment to, to continue to have interactions with his office, working with the Black Alumni Council. We look forward to those, those, those future opportunities. And we look forward to sharing the list of questions that weren't able to be addressed today with him offline, and hopefully having that information be looked at and hopefully responded in a different, in a different format or venue in the future. Also, I want to, I just wanted to get clarification, if it's going to be possible that the Zoom recording for this will be made available so that persons who weren't able to get on today will be able to see this information or be able to share. I think it's very important that we continue to be, provide as many options as possible where people can learn about what is going on campus. So this would be something I would definitely like to work with Lori Fan on, to make sure that this information is visible at some point in the very near future on, on the university platform at some point.
Thanks, George. Yes, I can confirm, we'll be recording and placing a link for this session on the BAC website.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Again, I know that we are pushed up against time. Again, I just want to say thank you to all the participants, to all of our guests who jumped on. We definitely appreciate your presence here today. As Lori shared and text, there will be a follow-up survey that will be coming out shortly after this event. We hope that you will take the opportunity to, to look at that information, answer the questions, and, and share that information. And then also look for additional resources that will be provided there as well. And then finally, I want to invite each and every one of you who are here to become active members of the Black Alumni Council. We need your, we need your assistance, we need your voices, we need you to help us move the university in a direction where all students, no matter what their background, their race, religion, will feel comfortable at Missouri State and be able to be thriving members of our, of our campus, of the, of the state, and of the world. So we look forward to you going to the Black Alumni Council webpage and signing up to become active members of, of the council. With that being the, that being the case, I just want to end this and say thank you again, and we look forward to working with you all very, very soon.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.